Seven o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order. And start by appointing Jim as a full member for this meeting, so our alternate. And Bruce isn't here tonight, so I'm gonna chair the meeting in his absence. We'll start with the approval of the draft minutes on our last meeting. If anybody has anything, I'm wondering if we should put a note in just to say we were doom bombed and that's why we didn't let anybody in, but.
I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't sure.
Maybe nobody complained and, but I don't, you know, that was the reason we didn't let anybody in.
Difficult difficulty.
Yeah.
There is the other on your agenda.
Oh, yeah.
The agenda says it's option.
Yep.
If you feel the need to explain that.
Okay.
I did add that.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, okay. Well, I don't, yeah. Nobody's asked.
I have no problems with it.
Nope.
I'll make a motion to accept the memo from August 20.
Second.
Okay, we'll go Carter.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. Public comment, did you have anything for us, Ken? We did get an email, the postage rate went up again, and just as a reminder, on our subdivision regs, we only charge $7, so we're eating $2.64 for every butter notice for a subdivision. But the site plan application is actually $10 for a butter. I don't know how or why, but we are covered a little bit on the, on the, the site plan application.
Hey, talk to Carol a little bit about that. Like on our application on the checklist, we have that number, can't we just leave it blank?
Yes, yeah, so.
That's why I did the latest thing, I just said.
Yep.
Current posted.
Current, current.
Right, I think that's what the ZBIA does as well, so that's what's on our version. And once we do the site plan, we should update that too. Any questions on that one? I think everybody got that email. On the Quinn application, Carol sent a message that the Mylars and the checks are down at the office. So Carter needs to sign, Bruce will need to sign, she was gonna reach out to Pete Caswell. And then, I don't know if you have a plan to go over to the registry deeds?
Yeah, that's my, well, actually, I sent my daughter one.
Oh, okay. No issues with them with the checks, because it seems like every time we would go, something different. Nope, great.
Yeah, I signed it, but the other two. As of this afternoon.
Yeah, yeah, like Bruce probably won't do it until Friday.
Okay.
And I don't know about Pete's schedule, so I guess we'll wait to hear from her when they're assigned and then can go down and
Okay.
take those over, some registry deeds. I think that was it for Quinn, is there anything else?
No, we emailed them, so they had all the checks to come in.
Great. All right, all purpose storage. The notice was in the ledger today, the letters went out last week for all the butters. And the applicant and the surveyor, as well as the regional impact notices. And the sidewalk will be before the next meeting, 6:30, so we'll meet over there first, it is a public meeting, so I think minutes, you know, are usually pretty minimal, we, I think we try to limit the discussion. At the site, we'll just get an overview and then we can come back and discuss in more detail, right? Isn't that typically? How it's done?
Yes, I don't think you're supposed to talk during the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Because you'll have little groups everywhere.
Right.
I was gonna say, should I come? Because I was trying to figure out, like, who should I stand next to?
Right.
And I'm happy to, in case there's something you want to document, but if you all just want to come back.
You document attendees?
Yeah, we usually document at least who's there.
Alright, I will.
Yeah.
There hasn't been any clearing yet.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so the.
You aren't gonna see much.
Right, so the question I have is, I don't know if anybody's reached out to them to let them know we're gonna do the sidewalk. I mean, they'll get the letter, but we should probably give them a phone call, and is that something you can do? Just to make sure, you know, they're ready for people to show up.
Yeah.
And that's okay for them.
Is the gate locked and whatnot too?
Probably, yeah, yeah. So someone will be, need to be there to open the gate.
The gate traditionally is not even locked.
Okay.
It's open during business hours, right?
Nobody's there.
Yeah.
Anybody attending the place, so.
Right.
It's always open.
Yeah, so somebody should be there while we're there for safety reasons.
From an attendee point of view, make sure you have a quorum, I know I'm out of town that week, so I can't be that person for the sidewalk, site visit.
Okay.
Potentially can dial into the meeting.
Okay, good to know. So anybody else, if you can't make it, let me know, or let Bruce know. Let's see, so there was a question on the fees, which I think is cleared up now, did I CC you on that email, Russ? So Carol calculated a dollar amount and I don't think it was correct, so I just want somebody else to check my math before we follow up with the applicant, so I sent it to you and Bruce.
Yeah.
To just check that, but I had the application fee $75, $10 for a butter, there was four, two for the, one for the applicant, one for the surveyor, and that was what they paid, the $135. And then the regional impact notices, they're considered a butter, so that gets the same $10 fee. And for three. And then the newspaper notice is $112.75. So they had to correct it, so the original dollar amount was a little higher, it actually went down, so. That's what I had, so you wanted to double check it? Then the other thing is, I don't think we did a motion for regional impact at our last meeting. Am I remembering that correctly? I didn't see it in the minutes. So I think technically we have to do the motion for the regional, to determine that it's regional impact. So just to be.
Because I know we talked about.
We did, we did, but I don't think we had a motion, so just to be formal and correct.
Okay.
If someone wants to make that motion.
So before that, what are the requirements for regional impact?
Yeah, so I, I did talk about it the last meeting, I mean.
See, I remember that.
I don't understand what would be necessary.
Let's see, here's the criteria. Proximity to other municipal boundaries, it's less than half a mile from the town of Wilton line. Traffic impacts on the regional road network, so that's Route 101, so that's a regional arterial roadway, so a lot of traffic.
Have you ever got any notices from Peterborough or Wilton?
Well, there was one sent out for Ben's project to other, to other towns, but we got the regional impact for New Ipswich for their subdivision. But I don't know of any other development on 101 that.
I mean, we've already sent out.
We've already sent the letters.
Notices, so I don't think we have a choice about, we already have gone down that path, I think what you're looking for is just that we.
Yeah, so the other, right. Exactly, and though, just to be clear, the other one was that we talked about was that it abuts a aquifer that we share with the town of Wilton. So there's the potential effect on groundwater, surface water, and wetlands, which is another one.
Has anybody from Wilton responded?
No, not yet.
Yeah.
They just went Friday, I think the letters went. And Monday was a holiday, so.
We said in the minutes, so that's what we were gonna do.
We did.
So.
Yeah. But we didn't have a motion, so I just wanted to be correct and then vote, and you can vote no if you want, George, if you're opposed, but that's that's where we are, so. Is there a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we do a regional impact notice.
Okay, sir, a second?
Second.
Okay, and then we'll vote?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
No, yes.
So that's five to one? Okay, thank you. Um, let's see, zoning ordinance updates is next on the agenda. Which I sent to Kathy and I think she sent out to everyone.
Sorry, just going back to the storage, at the next meeting, we're gonna discuss. We're going to have the public hearing, right, and discuss that as a group, is that correct?
Yes, yeah.
We can do a motion.
Good question. You don't know?
No.
I don't think we did, like, I think. I know.
We, we said.
We said we were gonna do it, we made a date and everything.
All right, somebody wanna make that motion?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion, we have a public hearing for the proposed expansion of the storage space on 101. As applied for.
Okay. Carter?
Yes.
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 Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you, Carter. Yeah. Is there anything else on the all purpose? Yeah, so we'll, we'll do the sidewalk with, and then we'll come back here for the hearing, well, first, we'll start by reviewing all of the materials and determine if it's complete enough for us to move into the hearing. And if it is, then we'll start the hearing. If we still have questions, if there's more information, we can continue it to another date. If we feel the need, or we can vote on it at that time.
What time is the sidewalk?
6:30. Good to move on? Okay. So, I sent out a new version of the zoning ordinance, just the formatting stuff and added the new things that we voted on in March. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to go through it, if there's anything I missed. The only thing I noticed when I was going through it again was that when I tried to click on the table of contents, you know, to take me to that item, it didn't take me to where I, it was close, but it wasn't exactly where I wanted it to go.
Really?
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know how to do that, so I, that's something anybody else knows how to do, if you could check it. I think it's only affecting the new text that we added, not everything.
You have to rebuild the table.
Exactly. Yeah, so I couldn't figure out how to do that.
This is Word?
Yes.
So it'll do it for you automatically?
I did that, but it still wouldn't take me to the right spot. And I can tell you, and maybe it was my version of Word, but it, I can tell you exactly which one kept tripping me up, that was.
Probably some checkbox somewhere you're gonna have to click.
Yeah. Okay, in a second. It asked me, do you want to update the whole document? And I said yes, and it kept taking me to, I know it, it was the, I have a different folder for that, but. It was at the end, administration, the new text we added about the building code. Yeah.
Because that's that number two.
Exactly. I don't know what it's doing, I would fix that and then it would work, and I'd click on it to take me to that page, and it would take me to a different item. And then the extra digits would show up, so I I need technical expertise for that. So we're volunteer. Anyone?
I have Word with my job, I don't have it personally, but I could do, since it's a minor, I can probably figure it out.
Okay. Yeah, I think Keith set it up initially, so I could ask Keith also, maybe it's a simple thing for him, but.
Which stuff?
It's the zoning ordinance.
So you're just saying that the links don't work, or?
Is it working for you?
Like table look.
So if you click on, you know, it says control, click on the page number or the item in the table of contents.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Click on the one that says.
Section eight, building code, fire enforcement.
And see where it takes you.
On page number 6,567.
I guess I'm looking at it in Dropbox and I don't see.
Alright.
So in the PDF version, which is what I can open here.
Yeah.
It'll take me to the correct.
The PDF.
Page sixty-five.
Okay, but a different item, right?
No enforcement is there, section four?
Yep. So it's just the Word version doing that?
I think so, because the PDF seems to work.
Okay.
Just the new version or?
It's in the Dropbox, the new version's in the Dropbox, yeah.
In both.
That's what I just did, I just did section eight. Manufactory.
Oh, no, it's under administration.
Article eight, section four.
Yeah.
Took me to section four enforcement.
Okay.
In the PDF?
No, it's not.
Oh, nothing, I know, just the problem with Word, is there so many?
Well, that's what I wondered, I just want to make sure whatever we put online and actually works correctly.
Which would be the PDF, though, right?
Yeah, it would be the. Yeah.
And this version is basically the one re-formatted for all numberings and all that.
Exactly.
It's all the same.
Yeah, 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 we didn't change any content other than adding what was approved by voters in.
Correct.
So.
Yeah. Quick scan of it, of the PDF version showed, you know.
It seems to be okay. Should we put it out there and?
It's working.
Is there a motion to do this? It's just like, you know, I've been looking at it for months, so I might not necessarily notice things, so.
We're just looking to put it back up online, reformat it.
Yep, yeah, and I think Ken was looking for a printed one for the office as well, right? Yeah.
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 All right, I'll make a motion that we put it up.
Alrighty.
Second.
Okay.
Yes.
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 Abstain.
Ah, come on.
Yes, I'll do it, yes. George, you were yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you. I'll put it out there.
Thank you, that was a lot of work.
It was a lot of work. Um, GIS mapping, is there any update on that?
Yeah, I went to the CIP meeting the other night and I brought up that we might want to do this and, oh, we first comment was, I thought we already said yes, I said, well, we said yes to the $3,000 thing.
Yeah.
But what we're talking about is probably gonna be closer to something like $60,000. And everyone first went, oh, but then like, well, you just gotta get it in the budget. And.
Oh, in the budget, not as a warrant?
Yeah, but in the, we have a a budget thing in, in our CIP spreadsheet, it has the costs over a whole bunch of years.
Right.
And so it's not, obviously something that's gonna happen this year. But the idea was to get it in, and then there's also this form that we gotta submit. With, so, the idea was, can we get like a real hard number? And get everything in and say which year we kind of want to do it and fill out this form. Then there's a meeting, and particularly we want to go to the November thirteenth meeting, and that's when the planning board would be able to talk about anything they want to do.
Okay. Is that a joint budget and, yeah?
Yeah.
And they also understand like the maintenance or?
Yeah.
Annual costs.
Annual costs going forward, okay.
Actually, there's two parts of it.
Yeah, yeah, it's not just the initial funding. So they think a warrant article though is what, is how it would go, have to go?
I would, we didn't really get that, they said to fill this out and to get it into the planning.
I see.
Budget thing, and then they'd figure, would figure out, I guess.
Yeah.
What to do with it from there. But I think this is the first step, is to come up with a, well, the first step is to re-contact them. And say, hey, what's your price this year? And then, from there, fill this form out, go to that meeting, and then see what happens.
Okay.
I had a thought. We have the AutoCAD drawings. So. I don't know if it's a conflict of interest, but as a subcontractor or something, I think I can take the CAD files and at least move them so that they land latitude, longitude sort of close, as opposed to now, where Main Street's behind the building here. Because I, I'm thinking that's what the problem was, that's the problem on New Hampshire Granite, is that it got uploaded, but it's in the wrong, you know, the wrong datum, or there was, I'm I'm thinking it's a scale factor. Is with latitudes, longitudes, and state plane coordinates, there's ground coordinates, there's state plane coordinates, and you can easily use the wrong one and shift everything way over.
That would save a lot of money.
Well, I started thinking if there was something easy to fix, and just if you have, we have the whole CAD, and then there's just put it together and see what happens, then from there, let them fix all the little stuff like the tax map numbers or whatever. But at least get it in the geospatially in the place it's supposed to be.
Right.
And you know, I thought I would try and just screw around and take a stab and see how difficult that would be, I, I really don't think it's that hard.
Yeah.
You can, in AutoCAD, you can overlay whatever current aerial photography they have in New Hampshire, so you can see what you're looking at. And then you put the map.
Right, so you put the map.
Yeah, and you say, oh, no, no, that's right, that goes over here, and there, there might be other issues, you know, maybe this map and this map don't actually line up, but I don't think it would be worth a try just to screw around with it a bit.
Yeah.
So do you want to get two prices from them, then one with including what you could do and then?
Yeah, I bet it's gonna be a lot less than $60,000.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think that's what they're thinking of doing, is just redoing the whole amount.
Right.
And.
Not knowing where the errors are.
Right, yeah. I don't think it's gonna be that bad, no.
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, we'd get some prices and what, what we would pay you if we're gonna do it as a subcontractor. I don't know.
I think versus $60,000, mine would be super, super cheap.
Well, yeah, and I think it's harder, you know, trying to push something, I'm still like, I think it's valuable, but it isn't that valuable. I don't know.
Right.
I mean, we can obviously leave that up to voters, but.
Yeah.
I think if it weren't as astronaut, astronomical.
Yeah.
As the current estimate.
Yeah, another thing that came up at that meeting was had we talked to other towns and see how they afford this, and were there, first, were there any other towns our size, and well, there's tons of towns our size.
Right.
And how did they afford it, how did they come up with it? And I've tried I don't know. The selectmen and other towns don't seem to want to talk, or planning board, no matter who I call, it's like, oh, we didn't do that. Nobody continued to react to me, I've talked about a dozen different towns, like, I picked around that I thought were about our size, and I haven't got one answer yet.
I wonder if that is something we could get from the companies that do that, is like, because if, who did you implement this for?
Maybe have a list.
And then like, can you give us a contact of who we should talk to?
Who was the person there, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we have this giant list of towns.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, maybe like a more recent one, I wonder if they just didn't have the same problems as what we have, like what you're saying.
Yeah.
Is, if it.
I would bet they're all the same.
They're all different, I mean, like some town, like Surrey. Last time I was in Surrey, their tax map was a big paper on the wall.
Yeah.
Just drawn, it wasn't something you can hand it out, I think it's better now, but.
Right.
You know, and then you get all the way to other places like Peterborough or Keene or Nashua that they have everything that was ever known about that lot.
Right.
Online.
Well, so there's that SWRPC meeting, which is supposed to have planning board members from other towns, and I think that's next week. So I was gonna go to that. Yeah, if anybody else wants to come, but I could poke around and try to get some information. If you tell me what, I mean, what's the question to ask other than, how did you pay for it?
Yeah, if, if I can squeeze in, like, next week, I, I think I have a planning board or some kind of meeting every night.
Yeah. Okay, I think it's the 11th, right, isn't it?
Is it in the day?
I think it's in the evening.
I can get you a contact for Ridge Select Board if you, if you want one.
Yeah.
Yeah, Gilson, next, it's Wednesday, September 11th, at six. Yeah, thank you. At the Gilson Library. Yep. Okay, so I'll see what I can find out, and then you can get some prices and.
Okay.
Any other questions on that one?
Nope.
Okay, driveway. When you're gonna put us out of our misery, Murray?
I need to get back at that.
Yeah. It would be great to get that wrapped up, I think it was just the newer statute that we were waiting on, so do you need help with that? Does, do you want somebody else?
Just, you know, basically go back and review.
Yeah.
What we did before, review the RSA, think it kind of makes sense a lot.
Right. Is there anything I can do to help?
If, if you have, if there's published information or more insight into the impact of that RSA.
Okay.
That, that talks about regulations for driveways that are greater than 150 feet in length. That would be helpful, so it's been out there for about a year, there should be some interpretations by now of, of how it's been implemented. And it's just unique in that it feels like the RSA to me was meant to relieve restrictions, so if your driveway is long and you comply with this with you're good. For us, since we don't have restrictions beyond 30 feet, it actually implements restrictions. So it's, how do we do that carefully?
Did you talk to anybody at the Bureau that, that New Hampshire Planning?
No, I didn't get a chance to do that.
OPD? They can change their names a couple of times, so I keep forgetting what the recent.
We had several discussions with the fire departments around, on the 150 feet, generally it's a life safety thing, for commercial use, not for residential.
It's, I, yeah, I think it was supposed to be for like apartments or multifamily.
Right. Any big facility where people have to have, you have to have an exit within 100 feet of every place.
Yeah, right.
So, and then your fire apparatus has to get down the side of the building, and if we need more, they have to be able to come in, pass that person, get on the right side.
Right.
So that's, that was big. Some of the code stuff I've been doing over in Jackal.
Yes. Yeah, this particular one specifically is for one and two family residences. If your driveway is greater than 150 feet and it's wider than a certain amount, I forget the exact amount, then all the other rules that apply to commercial regulations cannot be applied to you. So it's kind of, it's kind of like pulling back some potential overreach for just the single and two-family houses as long as you're this wide.
Right.
We are, our, our regulation is completely absent on that stuff, because we've only regulated the first 30 feet at the moment. So it's, it's, if we, if we implement this or reference it, it's a way to sort of define, hey, if you, if you make your driveway this wide, then all the other rules that, that apply from the state on down don't apply to you. If you choose to make it narrow, well, then you've got to go reference a whole bunch of other stuff. Your choice.
Kind of makes sense, but I, I do think there's a big commercial and residential in them.
Right.
And then, well, I mean, I think once you get past the two-family, you're into commercial, and then with three and more.
Right.
So.
Yeah, this didn't affect that, it was, this, this particular RSA only applied to single and.
Two-family. Okay, well, I can reach out to Office of Planning and Development.
Okay, that would, that would be helpful.
Have any advice? Um, so is there anything else before we move on to work session? Um, so is there anything else before we move on to work session? Okay, so the first item up is the. Proposed zoning amendments, which I don't know, maybe it's not the right. Agenda title, but. It's the, um, recommendations. That came out of the HOP grant for, um, zoning. Changes, so that was, um, including the Moosewood. Natural Resources Regulatory Review. The Steering Committee Recommendations and the HOP Grant Consultants.
So in this document, that essentially starts on page three, page four or thirty.
Yes, page four of the one that I sent out. So if you flip to another. Yeah, this is all, I shouldn't have done it the other way around. This is master plan first. So. Um, yeah, so starting here. So. I sent out. What I came up with, looking through all those different resources. I don't know if anybody came up with different things or additional or. Had any? Thoughts on what I put together here?
I mean, there, there's, there's a number of things to be considered, um. I don't, it doesn't come across as they made any suggestions for change. You know, the first one, for example. Building setbacks, um, meet state standards, but on the low end for the region. Um, of which the only thing I could find in that, in that area was, you know, stay away from, you know, seventy-five feet of a water body. But, um, is there a recommendation that they had for? Potential changes? Or was that just a comment?
It was just a comment. Yeah, when they reviewed it, that was their. That was their comment. I think I tried to pretty much take it word for word from what they put.
I think a lot of kind of what they had were more, right, like they're just stating.
We saw.
May change that.
So did anybody come up with a list of what they thought might be? Items to pursue? This year, next year, not at all?
Well, I spent some time on the Steering Committee Recommendation on Parking. Where our current. Zoning says, um. A new dwelling, and I assume that means single family home. Shall have four parking spaces, which can include the garage. So if there's a two car garage, two more outside or four total. And then when you look in the ADU section, it says you're required to have one more parking spot. And one could extend that to be one more parking spot per ADU should there be more. And I think what, what I'm reading in some of the comments is typical. More typical is two parking spaces per dwelling, which might say. Two for the new construction, two for each ADU. So if you had a single family home, instead of four plus one. We'd have two plus two as the requirement. Does that make a difference? I don't know.
Very, I'm experimenting only one additional space per ADU.
Is our, that's our current zone. So our current zoning says one additional. The comment in there typical across our region is two spots per dwelling. Or two parking spaces per dwelling. Which was the recommendation, I think, in the, to make, to make that change. Doesn't. We don't have to go with that, but.
For, for the task ADU would be just one extra.
Could, yeah. That could be, yeah, that could be, you know, a reasonable. Solution.
So should we just talk about general topics? What you think? So parking is one that.
Based on the comments that are coming.
And then we can. Come back to the details. What else?
ADUs.
ADUs.
And I know there's one nuance on our ADUs that the formulas in our current zoning are.
Complicated.
Complicated.
Confusing.
They're different, but they mean the same.
Right, there's a, yeah.
So we could, we could potentially simplify them and make them the same. calculation, if that makes.
Did anybody else have anything that they thought? For, say for twenty twenty-five March versus twenty twenty-six? Or they not at all?
Well, it's probably the same idea with the ADUs is to revise the PID because the formulas don't work. I would think any place that, stuff like that, if the formula doesn't work and you can't figure it out, then that ought to be fixed.
And, um, workforce housing only applies to PRD, so the, the two kind of go together. And is that something you think that's a twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six? It's a complicated one.
That feels complicated. I mean. I've read through that, but.
That feels to me like a twenty twenty-six.
To pull together what. We actually want. That to read as. Where some of the other things are probably simpler.
Parking thing is very simple. That's an easy one, actually. And maybe the, um. Not all the ADU regulations, but maybe like the getting rid of the double the lot size.
Right, right, yeah. Well, I said, let's just pick some topics. Um, I had under, um. PRD and workforce, um, to look at things like the. Low impact developments, the green infrastructure. Those. All are part of. ERD. And, um. You know, it doesn't look terribly. Intimidating. I looked at a little research on that and it's. And it goes with what we've heard, which is to preserve natural landscape features, minimize the effect of development on the water. Um, you know, basically it's protecting the natural environment and the resources. And, and part of that is, um, you know, um. Stormwater runoff. The open space thing popped up quite a bit. And. Honestly, I don't know how complicated that is to look at.
In what way? I mean, I guess when I think of that, I'm not sure with the. Like, do we as a planning board have?
It's in the zoning ordinance, so yeah.
Within the zoning ordinance, ordinance and in what way, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, that came up in, in, um, the Moosewood Recommendations and what did they say about it? In, increased connectivity between areas of open space. They talked about forest conservation districts. Like it was in somewhere else. Increase open space dedication. That was in the subdivision regulations.
Plan from our targeted conservation.
That's what it sounds like, yeah. And to me, that feels like a more of a working with the Conservation Commission type of project.
But it's also buried in the PRD.
It is.
Regulations that. Have some open space.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I mean.
Again, it's. I don't know if that's a this year type of thing, but I.
Seems to go, uh, next year, just. You have to really review that, that.
I think there's sort of two elements to it. There's. A open undeveloped space, which, you know, keeps some natural resources. But then open space, whether it's publicly owned or privately owned, is available for passive recreation or. Or recreation thing. So an open space is posted, no trespassing. Has some value, but one that's accessible to the public for. Recreation has a different value to the community. Both.
Right, and it just, it just came up under Moosewood, it came up under the Steering Committee, and it came up under the Consultants, so that was one.
Feels like that's, that's a theme we're hearing.
We need to, yeah, to pay attention to that one. But I, you know, I think you're right. I think we need to get more familiar with.
And just how you implement that and what that would target, like, obviously. Two lot subdivision is not going to have an open.
Right, so how does that work?
But if a, a large subdivision came in and then we're doing a PRD and there was an open space area. That's, you know, part of that calculation of not, that's not developable. But it created a trail network between, say, another public, private land or, you know, an area that. You know, having the, um, discussion around public access through that. Area, just, you know, just like we're trying to create, you know, contiguous space for wildlife, contiguous space for. Is a topic that could be talked about.
Yeah, so I think it goes along with the PRD stuff because that's, is it currently? Anywhere else in the ordinance that you're aware of? I mean, I, I know it's within that PRD, but I'm not sure.
There's something in the. As well as the. Definitely in the subdivision.
There are twenty-three references to it. Um, it's in PRD, it's in the Mountain District Conservation Development Area. It's in, constantly ownership and protection of conservation areas. So it's sprinkled around.
Yeah. Okay. Let's just, um, I'll put it in the. List with the PRD and workforce housing. Um, what about solar? That was one of. What, can, can I ask you what? You guys approve solar panels right now, right? Is there any guidance? You, you have a form. What's the, what are the rules for that?
Well, we got a, a permit form that has to be filled out. And it has to have all the required specs to it. What they're using, where the port net, whether it's, uh. Roof mount, ground mount, um, and then there's a. It doesn't go into how much power does it make and all, all the stuff. So we, there's no. We don't require that it make at least this or you can't go over this. So there's none of that, but. There is a requirement that we have to know what fixtures are going to be used and how much. The total array is going to be. When it hits the electric grid, but that's as far as we go. And then we also have a, um, uh. Exempt through Avatar. So if you have solar, that can't be assessed along with your house. There's no added app, uh, assessment to your house for having that.
And if someone's putting it on the ground, it has to be so many feet from the property line.
It's a structure.
It's a structure, yeah.
Usually they have a layout. Rooftop or behind a house or whatever.
Yeah, I feel like there was one that was close and they got a.
They had to go through zoning in order to get it done because that is the only place they could put it.
Right, and I, I guess it's because it was considered a structure.
If they're within the setback and you can't be within the setback. Doesn't matter what it's for, you can't be within the setback.
Right, okay. So it says solar options are not considered or planned for, and, and I'm just like, I'm not sure that's true, but. But it sounds like it's overseen by the select board, not anything in our zoning.
So it's checked out. Um, because in, in order for PSN, uh, PSNH ever so. To tie it in. To your system. They have to have okay from our building inspector that it's been checked. It meets the requirements to tie into their system.
So I wonder if we just need to put. Something in that acknowledges that solar panels are considered a structure, if that's, cause. Or maybe we don't even need to do that.
Considered a structure if they're on the ground. Structure if they're on your house. Only be on the ground because you have to have some kind of stable footing for them.
Right.
Normally there's a concrete pad or concrete piers or some kind of. System where all of this stuff is built on top of it.
I wonder if that came up because in some towns, there's been discussion, I don't know if it's actually happened of. Reducing setbacks or reducing visual impacts of solar arrays. Um, that may have come up in one of the towns larger here.
Well, I'm wondering if it was, he was thinking of a larger. Field or a solar farm.
So we have, so it's, well, it's interesting because we have. The, the small and large wind farm.
Right, well, that's why, right.
We don't have a solar farm section.
Right, that's what I was wondering if that's what he meant. So maybe I'll just go back and ask him.
There might be some, because you would think that would impact drainage from. Because it serves as like a bunch of roofs. You have all these roofs covering, you know, an entire acre of roof.
Do we want to see who it is?
We're going to. Cause they're going to put in the big solar. So we'll have. What we learned from there. To go back and see if we can.
Reflections could be an issue.
They want, they want to make enough solar power up there so they can run the whole place. I mean, every building up there. We just built a building. I believe the original plan calls for eight or ten more buildings. When they're done. I mean, buildings, not the little.
We saw, they came and presented to us, I think, last year, the year before, yes. Well, maybe I'll just circle back to, to him, but then that does, that sounds, if it's, that's the case, if it's a solar farm he's referring to, then that's. Bigger than. This year kind of thing.
Farm, but it will be enough so that they can do all of that thing, which I mean, is going to be the biggest.
Right, it's still self-contained versus, yeah.
It'll have a. Actual control structure with all the battery banks in it and all the power being distributed to. Everyone.
Is it? Feeding the main grid or is it just their property?
I don't know how that works. I'm not.
I think all of them feed the main grid and then you're gonna, uh, reduction. You'll have to, you can't like.
Cause that's, that, that is the definition of off-grid. I don't think you can be off-grid. I didn't say there are people that are off-grid. I don't think technically you can be off-grid.
I think you can be off-grid, but, but when I've seen the solar powered, I don't know, maybe it's different, but. Yeah, typically it feeds back into the.
Timberdree wanted to feed back in because that's where you're making your money, because you're using the electric when you're down. In order to get recomp for that, you gotta sell. Some to push back.
Maybe it was just rumor that I latched onto, but I, I was under the impression that you couldn't be.
I've never heard of anything that you couldn't.
Well, batteries, if you had a battery system, then. That's all it's, it's a lot of having enough batteries to meet your.
All right, well, let's put that in the needs more research category.
And ask him if there's an Harry to. Does that design that? And Harry got.
Anything else anybody pulled picked out that they thought seems like something we would wanna consider? Or not consider? Or we can go down the list.
I'm looking, yeah, there was one of them.
I mean, the other one that comes up is also the multifamily that came up.
Yep.
Again, I think that goes back to the PRD and the workforce housing. Um, other than, you know, the steering committee talked about um. Conversions of existing farmhouses to.
No.
Multifamily.
This last page thing allow two family homes in all districts, so multifamily again, I mean.
Right.
I don't, I think if we're trying to pursue other things. For zoning changes, that, that's going to be a large one that we're going to receive a lot of conversation about.
The multifamily thing.
Yeah, it's a trigger word.
And I. I personally. Not sure how I feel on that, so I, I mean, I think that those are big changes and. If that's. What we feel we need to pursue, that we may want to have more time on that.
I think we should definitely. Look at it though. I mean, for. I wouldn't necessarily be in favor of multifamily like. A big parking lot and four buildings.
Right.
Ten units each.
Right.
But I think you should be able to take your house, for instance, and divide it into and have a two-family house, take existing um. Infrastructure that's already there, and if you can. If you have a subject taking a while of work, why not make your house into a two-person house, a two-family house? You know?
Yeah.
Goes to, you know, someone has one of these. Old, large houses.
Hey.
And they don't, they just, they only use half the space or, and they don't want to heat half the space and pay more, and that's, that's where that comes.
And we have some in town already that you wouldn't even know from looking at it from the outside.
That's, that's big everywhere. I, I work in that, you know, when I was working at Bedford, Venice, I, I mean, that's. All over the place. You look at these huge houses in, in Bedford and you think, wow, somebody's got a lot of money. And then you see the meters, one, two, three.
Well, that, yeah, that was the thing when I did the charrette in Wolfboro, people were like, we really like this downtown neighborhood and, but we. And we don't want any apartments put in, and you look at all the big old houses. In that neighborhood and they're all multifamily.
Yeah.
There's not a single family among them.
Because nobody wants to spend the money.
I mean, this is Wolfboro, it's right downtown, you know, there's the lake, so it's expensive and probably a lot of them are short-term rentals, but. Um, yeah, if you don't know. That you're looking at a multifamily.
I was just in Bedford for the first time in a long time, just the last week, and they are that, the, the road that I take to come out of Bedford, Mass, just. Duplexes going in duplexes.
Yeah.
And, and they're really going after them.
Yeah, they're only kind of playing devil's advocate on the conversion. Aspect is if, for instance, we have a lot of big old farmhouses that have property, right, they're not. On an acre in the center of town necessarily. Um, and when you start to convert those into multifamilies, a lot of times they're going to eventually become investor-owned. You know, not owner-occupied, and then what are they going to do? They're going to subdivide out that property, build. As many houses as they can, and I mean, there's just a flip side to that, like, I don't necessarily have the, a problem with.
Gateway.
Being converted. For a family that lives there, but then you have to look at what is the downstream impact of something like that? It can be significant and we. So I don't think any of those changes should be taken lightly without.
Without some.
Right, right. And currently, if you wanted to create a multifamily. You could, you could create an attached ADU, ADU in your house. It wouldn't be a down-the-center duplex, but you could. Create that separate living quarters.
Like my house in Hudson, I brought my parents to live with me, so there was, there was essentially an in-law down in the basement. It's unofficial.
Yeah.
You know, the town didn't recognize it as being an in-law, but when I bought it, it had a kitchen and.
Right.
Stuff down there and it, it became more and more of. Of an in-law as, as we, you know, my parents had it. You know, we had the kitchen redone and. Yeah, so now it's definitely a. Separate living. Space down.
Yeah, so I think the thing, just to clarify, um. Um, if it's. One house that becomes two units. That's not a multifamily, multifamily is more than two.
Correct.
Um, a duplex, which is again, not the right word, because it's. Not necessarily what. It's not a box divided in half.
Right.
But, you know.
One of the, uh, things that came out of the study was that people did not want us to require a double lot. For detached ADU.
Right.
Right.
Are, are we still requiring a double lot?
We are. So that's.
Should we reduce it?
I think.
I think so.
That's where we're, I think we're leaning in that direction. Yeah, we haven't voted on it, but yeah, I would say.
I think we should.
Something we should look at for sure.
When you say double lot, you mean the double minimum lot size?
Yeah. So.
So you have to have. What the minimum was, what five acres?
Five acres in the mountain district, so you'd have to have ten.
So you have to have ten acres to have an ADU.
A detached ADU.
A detached.
It depends on the district, so most of us are in.
The rural.
Rural residential, so you have to have six, six acres.
Um, metal district in it.
I.
I will, I was far north and east. Can't get any northeast.
I think you're mountain, because you're, I think the, um. The monks are in mountain district.
Yeah.
And you're right close to them, so.
But I think, yeah, we should, we, that. Seems. Like a big enough thing to go after and to. Have a discussion, and I think that, like we said before, the whole ADU thing needs to be rewritten and addressed.
It's like, I, the biggest thing on the ADU thing for me is the, the different sizes.
Right.
That, you know, like in my situation, in my personal situation, I built a very small house for my wife and I. And my son wants to live on that property, so and his, he's got six kids, so. It's not gonna be a small house, so technically that would be the ADU. Whether, you know, you'd, you know, flip the size, he'd have the big house, I'd have a small house. But.
Yeah, I'm not sure that. Right, I mean, it may not.
Does that meet, you know, requirements?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
As they are today. Or as. Kind of like it changed.
Yeah.
Obviously.
So then the lists I have for us to consider are parking.
Yeah.
The ADUs. And multifamily conversions with safeguards, and you listed off a bunch. Of things just to consider. For this twenty twenty-five March.
I think we should pull the multifamily conversion off of that personally.
We take a vote or, I mean. We can make a decision once we look at something we proposed. Um, and we also need, you know, some volunteers to look at some language for each of these.
Were you going to look at some solar stuff too or?
Um, I'm gonna ask what he's referring to. If it's a solar farm, then that's not this year. But if it's something simple, that's a different conversation.
I mean, I, I look at the. The detailed zoning regulations for wind farms and. And they were kind of in reaction to a developer wanting to do something.
Right, and they looked, took other towns.
Right.
That they've already.
So let's, let's say we had someone come in and said, hey, I've got fifty acres, I want to. I want to put fifty acres of solar panel up. Is that something the town would want? Do we want to encourage or regulate or? Put rules around that? I think it's kind of the question.
Right, yeah, and I, and I don't know what he's. Referring to, so. I think that is the question, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, personal solar panel, it should be not even.
Yeah. Right.
But yeah, maybe a giant fifty-acre solar farm should definitely, at least recite the green field.
Right.
Right, so in that case, it would probably fall into that commercial side of. You know, and, and rather than size, I would say, are you feeding? Where are you feeding? You know, I mean, I mean, if you're feeding, if I have a house and I'm feeding my house. Then that's not a solar. Restricted to what I need for my house, but if I'm going to be. You know, some, three or four other. Um, air buildings or whatever, then now you're starting to get into a solar.
Feeding into the grid so you can go in Spain.
I never thought of that. I, I make a big. Very big farm, yeah, so that I can make some money back from electrical, I think you can consider that.
Well, let's table solar for now and then we'll get more information, so that's. So for that list, I've got PRD workforce housing with. Um, under that, the low-impact development and green infrastructure, open space, and then separately solar farm, potentially. If that's what he's referring to.
These are the for future.
That's for future, yes. The cottage housing one too, I think is also down the road.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's a pretty limited list.
Yeah, it's not a terrible list. Um, so then the next question is for this future list. Are we going to go after the grant to get some technical assistance? Are we gonna try to muddle through on our own?
Well.
I know, I mean, obviously I know how I feel about you all know how I feel.
PRD, uh, the, the low-impact development, open space, all kind of one thing, really.
That would be for not this coming year. Would that fall under this grant or no?
Yes, yeah, it's, it'll take some time to develop.
And we need some help, I think, figuring out exactly, you know. How to write it, what to say and all that stuff.
Yep.
To that, we should have a grant probably. The, I don't know, I like the multifamily this year.
I do as well, I mean, if you wanna. I, you have a lot on your plate, but I mean, I think. We can look at some towns that. Maybe do it well.
Yeah.
Protections that you're, I mean, if you, I'm happy to work with you, Carter, if we, you want to come up with something that feels comfortable.
I'm not in favor of that, so I don't want to work on that.
Okay, you'll vote against it.
Yeah.
And so if you're, you know, like in your house, you wouldn't wanna be able to rent out?
I, I do, I have a rental. So detached ADU.
So you do do it, multifamily.
I do.
Yeah.
But I would not, would I convert my home? I could, I have space to add an attached ADU, which I can do. So. I, if I was gonna turn it into a four-family. Right, so like, I can, I can add an attached ADU, so I would have three units on my property. Would I then instead turn that into like a four-unit farmhouse and sure, then I would subdivide the house. The field across the street and build rentals because. You know, it just, it doesn't. I, I think going down that, that path is going to lead to investors. Buying properties and converting them into many units, which is not what our goal here is.
Right, we're. No, I agree.
Get an owner to stay in their house. And have their family live there, they can already do that.
But you can also already subdivide across the street if you want.
I, I could, right.
So, but you're not.
Because I'm, I live in my home, I'm not an investor buying my property to make a profit off of that. There's a difference, right? And. And that's where I'm coming from, it's not the person living in their home, it's. The person coming here to say, I'm gonna make a four-family out of this property, and then I'm gonna subdivide these two lots and build three more houses. It. There is, and I'm not sure how you safeguard against that, because you can't say. Because we have nobody to enforce that.
One way is water and septic, you know, they would have to put in, it would be cost prohibitive to do that. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't have.
Be zoning for that then, like, just in case somebody wants to do it, like.
The scenario that you described is not a three or four family, what you've just described is what, like eight units, if you're subdividing?
Big development.
That's a big development, that's not a multifamily.
No, no, I'm saying it happens in stages, you create a multifamily out of my home. But then you have all this extra land that you're paying taxes on, like, why wouldn't you set, and you have to have property maintenance that, it makes no sense for an investor. So they would sell that land and subdivide and build. And that. I don't understand what value is this adding for our town? Because down the road, that's what it's going to turn into.
Well, the value is that people have a place to live that they can afford.
That's fine, if we want. Ap- apartments everywhere and multifamilies everywhere, I mean, that.
It's not gonna happen everywhere, it's.
I could do something like that with my place, Carter.
I know, I absolutely.
My wife owns it down.
Well, then I really like your wife.
You know, say we put an apartment on the side of the house or something.
Yeah.
Does not want to have another family. With our family, right, so. If I could, I could very easily put a detached ADU. I have the. Water supply, adequate water, it's. Adequate septic.
Yeah.
So I don't want to do it either.
Yeah, I, and I actually, I like, I like having my tenants, I like having that, but I'm an owner-occupied home. My concern is that it turns into non-owner-occupied home. Kind of like the storage unit, right, it is not a local person doing that, right? We have investors coming in to expand, to make money, and that is what. A changing zoning is going to lead to.
So I think what you're, what you're concerned is if, if the zoning says you can take. An existing structure.
Right.
Break it into, not break it in, but, but create multiple apartments in there, more than two.
More than two, so a three to four family.
Becomes attractive and maybe more valuable to.
Investor.
The investor crowd.
Yeah.
Who come in and say, you know, look at, you know, my house, right, so we put six apartments in the bar.
Right.
Okay, that's value went up, I'm, I'm no longer there as an outside person running it, all of a sudden, there's six apartments plus two in the houses, eight units. Um, right here in the village district, and how is that going to affect the town's character?
Yeah. Yeah.
So we have that right now, just so you know. And it has, nothing, the world has not ended.
True.
And really, there's people that are, there was one couple living there that had to move because they didn't have transportation. So you're still gonna have certain. Um, people that can live here that can afford to be here.
I, I think it affects the landscape over time, and if that is what we. Are we looking for, and that, then that's a decision to make, I'm not for that.
So, so I'm being naive here maybe, or.
Yeah.
I'm still trying to absorb.
Sure.
All day, all evening, I've been absorbing, because you guys are bouncing around a little faster than I can keep up, but. I was under the impression that we were. You know, that what we were trying to propose here is looking at things.
Yes.
Not necessarily making changes, but you're, you're giving me the impression that the thought is, is that if we put something in the planning. Or discussion. Or in the document to regulate multifamily homes, for example, that opens the door.
We're talking about zoning changes going to voters in March.
Yeah, I get that, so we're talking about proposing for voters in March, but just. Just to be clear, if we put in a. A recommendation for how to handle a multifamily home. That opens the door. That opens the door.
If we change our zoning to allow multifamily conversions, then we allow them then, we don't currently. So if we change our, our current, our zoning.
So I'm hearing kind of two sides, like we do already allow it, but we don't already.
We do allow it by special exception.
Okay.
So it's, so it's not a level of review versus.
It's just, yeah, it's not, that's fine, I, and I'm not stepping into either side of this equation. And I, and I find myself, by the way, and I'm sure there's probably. Uh, hundreds of people that are renting out ADUs or whatever.
Right.
You're not on East Avenue, right, or East Road?
No.
My sisters are renting a place in Temple right now, sixty East Road.
Oh, oh, yeah.
They, they, and they've traditionally been renting from Ivy. But she was born, so they're renting from somebody else, I haven't met again, so.
Yeah.
It's price, yeah.
She is, she is, I mean, they're, they are, um, you know, enjoying. Looking around, they live in Utah, by the way.
Oh, okay.
But they're here this week.
Okay.
Just curious.
Let's, let's move on, we can debate the merits, um, at a later meeting. Um, let's go back to the question about the grant for PRD workforce housing, open space. The deadline is the end of September to apply, so we need to make a decision, so.
Yeah, purposes of like PRDs, PRD reviews and potential ordinance changes. Um, open space language, I think.
Yeah, and the green infrastructure, yeah, some water protections as part of the PRD workforce housing. That was all, came out of the Moosewood.
Yeah.
And, um, and I think Carol recommended that as well, third.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a bigger, bigger project that I think we have.
Yes, it's not a this year, but it's something that we could work with a consultant on, who can draft something for us to consider. Um, using their technical knowledge.
How much is the money is the grant for?
Depends on what we apply for, I mean, I think, I feel like the maximum was twenty-five for each phase for the last round. Um, and that included the, um, community engagement piece, you know, the training for community engagement, so it would be less than that. I have to crunch the numbers, but I could come with a draft to our next meeting. For review.
And we think we would use the southwest regional.
If they're available, I would start with them. If they have the staff, they didn't have the staff the last time.
Yeah.
Which is why we went with the other consultants. We could also look at the Nashua Planning Commission if they don't, if SWR PC doesn't, just so we have some options. We would do, could do a rider with them. That's, you know, if we get the grant.
I think we should, I don't think any of us have the technical expertise to.
I, yeah.
Start writing, or even look at something like that, it'd be good to have somebody else that knows what they're doing, knows the pitfalls. You know, you write it the wrong way, and all of a sudden you've caused an issue.
Right.
So, if we got that as a starting point, at least, it's a grant, so now we have some information. And then we can kind of figure out where do we go from there, and that's not this year, that's next year.
Right, yeah, it would take some time to go through everything. So is that a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? Okay, we'll vote, Carter?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
All right, I'll come back to the next meeting with the draft of the grant application. Master Plan. We were going to look at the vision statement. And the population and housing chapter. Did everyone have time to look at that? So on, on the vision statement, I think we've been saying we weren't gonna make any changes necessarily, um, you know. That was pretty good, um. Moosewood did have a couple of suggestions, one was to include outdoor recreation and seasonal tourism. Which I think we kind of do, but maybe not explicitly tourism. But we talk a lot about outdoor recreation. Targeting businesses that align with communities' values and size, I'm not. Not sure, I heard that in any community feedback myself. I, you know, I think people are into agriculture type businesses or work from home with low visibility kind of businesses. Which I think we have in the third bullet talks about. Um, no, wait, that's not the third bullet, the fourth bullet. All business housing other should be developed and integrated into the town's working landscape, et cetera. Innovative practices to preserve open space, I think we talk a lot about open space here. And securing grants and funding, and he, um, says infrastructure and environmental projects, which I. Think that community power thing maybe falls under that, but I'm not sure we need it personally in the vision statement, but. Because we talk about sustainable practices, including renewable, renewable energy should be encouraged. But I'm open if anybody wants to consider changing anything in the vision statement.
I don't have a problem with the vision statement, I think it is. Has been looked at fairly recently and.
Yeah, we looked at it all through the.
Yeah.
And, and that it, I think it's a good summary, actually.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't, I mean, a few of those may be, could be added, but I don't think it's.
The only thing I would say is that I did, um, because they're pursuing that complete streets. Um, program, if there should be something in the.
Something in it about.
Road safety. But they haven't gotten back to me. So, I might lose my voice. Um, so we'll just wait on that for now, I guess, if everybody's good with the way it is.
Yeah, I mean, it could be worked into the second to last bullet, which is, you know, we have, we have emergency response. You know, second paragraph, that's second sentence.
Seconds.
Should provide a sound infrastructure of roads, bridges and public buildings, and, you know, that could include. You know, roads, bridges or complete street goals or whatever, you know, whatever reference makes sense.
Yeah, I'm hoping they'll pitch something to us.
Be encouraged or thoughts on that.
And we can respond.
Makes, that's a good place to tie.
Yeah, yeah, great. Okay, pop, population housing. Just go page by page.
There, one thing I noticed is the links didn't work in the document on one, is, and I don't know if they were supposed to or not, but.
They should, should be embedded. Okay.
Which, I don't.
Okay. Anything on page one? This is the December twenty twenty-three, it should be in the Dropbox under Master Plan.
Under Hopping. Master Plan.
Um, sorry, it is population.
Sorry, this is really gonna throw me off.
I know, we saw it earlier.
Yeah.
I don't, didn't have anything until page nine.
I didn't have anything, the only things I picked up are really typos, so.
Yeah.
Um, that was pretty much it, on page nine, um, building permits, there was a blank line.
Yes.
You probably got, and there's a bunch of TV, TBDs in the table. And then, yeah, did you get, and then on page four, it says figure five, that's the last paragraph. But the figure is labeled figure four, so that's a typo. Yeah, you can. Yeah, I feel like a lot of mine is typos too, but on page twelve. The last paragraph, you know, like you guys don't have copies, right?
No.
It talks about eight hundred dollars or more a month, but I think the chart is thousand, so it's just to check with Carol. And there's some formatting stuff.
Yeah, I can't, I can run it through Word too, like. Just because I picked up all those typos, and maybe it's just.
Yeah, mine.
I guess I.
On the building permits, does it make sense to sort of divide and number the years from the beginning?
Yeah, and I think that was one of her, the thing she was waiting on from.
You have to manually grab it.
Yeah. And then she also, under that one, on that same page, she refers to demolitions, but it's, they're not noted anywhere in the chart.
Yeah.
So that was another question I had. Cause that affects. Yeah, it just wasn't clear, like, is this including demolitions or not including demolitions?
Or demolitions. So, you know, what she says is, you know, in two thousand twelve, seven permits were issued, of which four were demolitions, so really there was only. Four? Um, so the numbers don't add up, but.
Yeah, right. Yeah, it was not quite right. I'm sorry, I think I'm gonna need to.
Yeah, why don't we just wrap it up?
Yep, um, Russ, if, yeah, so we'll table the master plan thing, come back to that.
Yeah.
Um, I did have on the subdivision, a couple things on the application.
Okay.
Now, this is the one I'm, probably not.
Line to sign.
Yeah, um. It's, this is number three, but I think it's part of the previous sentence.
Yeah.
Um, we changed the numbering. In this recent version, so that's gotta be changed.
Oh, you might not have the, the most.
Maybe I don't.
I, I went through that tonight.
Okay, so maybe that's it. And then, I don't know, it's needed to come out.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and then this, we should have a line for the number of a butters.
Yeah.
And then, you know, the formula, and then down here, I, maybe we just include the, that size, because that's the size we usually get. Rather than these other, like, it looks like there's options for other sizes.
Yeah. I'll get rid of those others.
Yeah, I'll give you this, and. And then I had a definition for reserve strip, that's just from like the legal insider.
Okay. It was really weird, though, because I just started pulling all the regulations from the different towns that I've, the copies, and it's all the same. It's like somebody sent that up to everybody and they all put it in the regulations.
Right.
Yeah. And there was, there was two versions, there was one like, uh, that one that was, I put in there, and then ours, and New Ipswich has about the same as ours.
Um, and then there's that legislative update, there is a OPD webinar coming up. On September nineteenth, which will cover that topic, they are all recorded and available for viewing later on YouTube. Um, and the New Ipswich subdivision was tabled again to their first meeting in October. We already talked about the peer-to-peer roundtable. Yep, and the New Hampshire housing. Event coming up in October.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yes, thank you. All right, does anybody have keys? No, just me, okay.